From the city. Since Catherine. I think that was since Dana was there.
You know what else hurt the worst?
I used to get them all the time when Catherine. That's the point that they'd call me up from Little Rock and say, "Somebody's did it again."
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, December 10th. If we could have a roll call. Please ma'am, to establish court.
Terry McClung?
I'm here.
Melissa Green?
I'm here.
Tom Buford?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
I'm Thomas?
Here.
Harry Meyer?
Here.
Would you stand for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is a public hearing that we're having to establish and prioritize the needs of the city for 2019 for some grants that we're doing. I'm going to open us up to Catherine Baker if you want to lead us through this hearing.
I will. Good evening. I'm Catherine Baker. I'm with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development Commission or District, I'm sorry. I'm here to conduct a public hearing in preparation for an application for federal grants administered through the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. So, the purpose of this part of the meeting is to listen to comments from the public about what the perceived needs of the community are and then particularly with regard to the types of grants that we can apply for through modest agencies. So, what we propose to apply for in 2019 are community development block grants, which is the main type of grant that I apply for in my work. These are HUD grants that are dispersed through the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. So, in order to have a qualifying application, there are score, 100 points, and I have a scoring rubric here that I'll discuss briefly in a moment. But in order to have a successful application, our application project needs to meet federal guidelines for this type of grant and then also the state guidelines that are put on the program in Little Rock. So, we have identified a couple of projects we would like to apply for in 2019, but that being said, the purpose of this hearing is to listen to comments from the public about what you think the priorities of the needs of the city might be in applying for grant funding. And just one more note about what we do with these CDBG grants that I'm applying for in 2019. These are directed to alleviate needs for low to moderate income communities and also to eliminate slum and blight, which we don't have a great deal of in Arkansas, and also to address emergency community needs that would affect the health and safety of the community for which no other funding options are available. So, having said that, I would like to hear from anyone who would be interested in sharing their thoughts about what some of the needs are in the community here in Eureka and the types of projects that the community would like to see us apply for grants for. Some of the typical projects that are funded through these programs are water and sewer system improvements, drainage and flooding projects to alleviate flooding, also community needs that are not water-related such as projects that would alleviate homelessness, that address community health issues for low to moderate income citizens, and projects that address the needs of victims of domestic abuse. So, with those broad strokes of the kinds of projects that qualify under these grants, is there anyone who would like to comment about what you think the needs of Eureka are and what types of grant applications you would like to see developed? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. What about, you mentioned the drainage and flooding. Does that open up Black Bass Forest or even if we needed things that Lake Leather would as well?
Mm-hmm. You're right. Those types of projects would qualify for an application. The water and wastewater improvement projects go through a slightly different application process that has another layer of approval before we just apply for the grant because it's water and wastewater, so it goes through the WAC Commission. I don't remember what that stands for, but another commission that has to approve the engineering and make sure that it ties in well with other community water projects nearby. The Black Bass Dam is a project that has been on my desk since my first day on the job. It's something that we are continually looking for funding sources to address and it's been an unexpectedly challenging proposal. But, the mayor has forwarded engineering reports and proposed budgets for that project. We have everything we need to put together an application. It doesn't fit well with the parameters of the CDBG grant. We don't know that it would be a successful application, but we have some other options outside of HUD that we're looking at. Jeremy Ragland, my director, is looking at some other options that he's more familiar with especially. So, that's definitely on our radar and we know that that's a pressing priority.
Thank you for your help.
Uh-huh, sure. Yes.
As the city's addressing, the water issues, we're far behind addressing the sewage issues. We're presently finding the leaks, which have been pretty substantial, but the wastewater could sure use a lot of help and I think that's an area that any assistance you can give us would be greatly appreciated based on the fact that we're a city of springs, which unfortunately, they're all polluted because of the wastewater problems that we have, not thinking that this would be the magic bullet to address cleaning up the springs, but it would go a long way in keeping the exacerbation of that problem at a halt. So, I think that's, the wastewater may be a little bit more than the water delivery system. It's probably a bigger thing that the city's unable to focus on right now and any help would greatly be appreciated in that area.
Are there any other comments that anyone would like to address now? And I'll open up for comments again after I speak again briefly about the program and the applications that we have begun to develop. You're right, that water and wastewater is a huge priority and I think that we've discussed that pretty well in our thinking about what we want to apply for in 2019. One of the issues again with water and wastewater applications is that they have to go through a two-step process. They have to be approved before you can apply essentially. So, it takes a little bit longer to get those applications prepared and ready to be submitted. So, for 2019, we're proposing to request grant funding for a project that was already approved by WAC last year. So, it's a 270, I believe, thousand dollar budget at the time that it was cost out last year to increase the diameter of a water line down by the train depot from two inches to six, I believe, to go to the filter press station. So, that has already been, the engineering report has already been prepared. That's something that we can apply for with a good degree of confidence this year and we can absolutely meet the deadline to get that application in in time. One of the things that I've spoken with the mayor about is address or creating a schedule of applications. One of the things about CDBG grants is that we can only apply for one at a time per city and then two at a time per county. Carroll County has a couple of applications. One is for Echo Village here in Eureka to do their septic system for their project. That's an application that we're working on for the county. But for the city, we would like, I think, to concentrate on water and wastewater for this year because we have a good application potentially well-developed. That being said, we want to be sure that we schedule and think about the priorities of future years and the types of grants we want to apply for so that we don't miss opportunities or miss deadlines or get behind on our paperwork so that we miss a whole year of, they only apply, they only open applications once a year, so we want to be sure that we don't miss an opportunity by not planning ahead. Another thing that we can apply for in the case that our spring, our January through March application period, if the application for the water project should not be approved for whatever reason, first of all, we can apply the following year. They allow you to submit the same application two years in a row. So, sometimes that has to happen. But we can also, there's another smaller grant available for $75,000 that has an August deadline. So, we also want to develop, it has a little bit different priority list of the types of applications that are best scored, but that's something we also want to have ready in our back pocket in the event that the CDBG grant is denied. So, that being said, I have a stack of cards here. If anybody would like to communicate with me about thoughts about what you think might be some good priorities to be thinking about, maybe not necessarily for March, but as the years roll by and some of the other smaller projects for fire stations, community centers, police equipment, those are some of the other projects that we can look at. As well as, outside of what we get through AEDC in Little Rock, we can apply for some USDA grants. There are transportation grants that we can use for sidewalk. Eureka has been successful in securing those grants. So, that's something we want to keep paying attention to and being aware of other opportunities as well, as well as potential private grant opportunities that we're also developing through our office. So, let me see what I'm missing here. The timeline for the CDBG grants for the water project would be a March deadline and they let us know end of June, beginning of July whether we were successful or not. If we're successful, we'll start the paperwork immediately to get the project rolling. It's already well, the engineering specs are already laid out, so that should move relatively efficiently. If not, then we'll move on to our backup application for the smaller grants that are available to apply for in August. Also, we have an application in the works for historic preservation grant for this building to pay for an elevator to go down into the basement so that we can have public hearing meetings downstairs. So, that's something we're working on as well, outside of the CDBG grants that require us to have this hearing for the application. So, that being said, I brought a sign-in sheet. I know that we have, got it. Part of the score of the application, again, it's 100 points. 15 points are for public participation, so it's important that everyone signs in on our public hearing attendance sheet. Some of the other sections of the application are things that I'm confident we will have a good score. I can't, I'll go ahead and get this card if you don't mind, and I'll sign in too. We can't guarantee the success of an application, but I think the water project application looks good. So, we have resolutions that we have to pass in order to even apply for the HUD grant. We have five of them. Three of them are related to resolutions that HUD wants to see the city council pass, the fair housing, no excessive police force in the face of nonviolent protests. There are three of those that you guys have had an opportunity to review and then also two specific to the grant application. One is to give the city the authority to apply, the other is to give me the authority to submit the application, fill out the application paperwork. So, those are there. I think that's about it from my list of what I need to cover in this public hearing. Is there anyone else that has a comment about anything at all to do with the grant application process? Okay, I'm going to just leave my cards up here. Again, make sure that you sign in on the application sign-in sheet. This will be submitted with the application, so your name will be part of our success in getting that thing approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
If there's no further public comments, then I will call the public hearing to a close and open it up for approval of the agenda if I have a motion. I'll make the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do you have any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as submitted, sing five a sang aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
And we have a motion and a second by Ms. Snyder. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as submitted, sing five a sang aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We have two places on our commissions. We've got a couple of vacancies on the planning commission. If anybody out there in TV land is interested in being on the planning commission, please come by and get an application. Also, the CAPC's got a vacancy, so we'll be, the CAPC, if you're interested in, I'm not sure which position, Mr. Thomas, you know which position that is? Is it the restaurant?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that a restaurant? Okay. If you're a restaurant or involved with a restaurant interested in serving on CAPC, please submit an application to the CAPC. Other than that, we are on to the public comments and please limit your comments to three minutes, please. And please state your name and address for the record. If you have some stuff you want to distribute?
Okay, my name's Larry Kennamore. I'm with Statman Disposal Corporation. I'm here to help Eureka Springs get dangerous drugs out of your homes and off the streets of your city, help you address the opioid crisis and your drinking water pollution from citizens flushing them down the toilet or throwing them in the trash. You know, thousands of people are now taking and using strong painkillers, both as prescribed by their doctors and to get high from illegal drugs that have been obtained from questionable sources. Carroll County citizens are dying from these drug overdoses at the rate of 23 people a month. When these pills expire or are no longer being used, where are they stored? Where children or teenagers can get a hold of them? And if you throw them away in the trash or down the sink, what does that do to the environment and your drinking water? We have developed a safe, effective, and easy way to collect and dispose of these drugs and is provided with no taxpayer dollars. Here's how the program works. We provide a safe disposal bottle that fits inside of your medicine cabinet and which is sent to every address in your city and it holds 50 to 60 pills or liquids, and this is the package it comes in. When full, they mail back, the postage paid, and a new bottle is sent back to them. We set up safe disposal kiosks in convenient locations where folks can easily drop off their unused and expired drugs at any time, not just on certain days or at specific locations. These kiosks can be set up in pharmacies, police, fire stations, libraries, hospitals, or nursing homes. The kiosks are filled with a patented product that instantly neutralizes any drugs that are dropped into it. We provide at no cost a school program to provide all your students with information about the program so that they may go home and educate the parents on how it works. This program is your best alternative to keeping dangerous drugs out of the hands of children or criminals and it will not pollute the ground or waterways like so many disposal options do. Is it the safety of your children worth it? Wouldn't it be wonderful to dispose of these dangerous drugs without polluting the ground or the waterways any longer? It can be done and we can help you do it at no taxpayer dollars. This is a community problem and only your community can solve this problem by addressing it at home where according to statistics, a large portion of opioids come from. Let us help you safely and quickly remove these drugs from your homes and community. We can do what no one else can do. Let us help by putting these bottles and kiosks in your home and community. Let's get started today. Why wait any longer? I'm Larry Kennamore with Statman, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
No questions.
We've been doing this for a while.
Doing?
Turning the drugs over to the police and stuff.
No questions.
Hi, James DeVito, 5 Center Street. Interesting that you mentioned the elevator to the basement because that's the topic I wanted to address tonight is that the council might want to take a brief moment and consider the implications of possibly not having a hospital in this community. Those of us who have been here long enough remember a guy by the name of White, I'm sorry, by the name of Knight, who we laughingly referred to as our White Knight, who was going to come and save the hospital and promises of building a new hospital. And we all see where that went and now we have Allegiant, who was going to build a new hospital up on the old Miles Mountain Musical Museum property. They were also going to remodel our hospital with a multimillion dollar project. As Will Rogers said, everything I know I read in the newspaper, it's my understanding that they've breached their contract, are behind on their payments. Before we rush into building a facility in the basement of this auditorium, we need to pause and think about what might happen if nobody picks up the smallest hospital in the state of Arkansas. And that is a possibility that council has to keep in the back of their mind before you spend over a hundred and some thousand dollars to build a facility, which ultimately may result in just breakout rooms for the auditorium, which is something we really don't need at this time. But you do need to face the reality of the possibility that you will have a large building located up on White Street that will have no occupants and could possibly house all of the city offices. So, please don't rush into anything until we find out what the ramifications with Allegiant are because you may be the landlords of an empty building. For 30 years that I've been in the community, we sat in that room, but now you have this facility here, which is a great improvement over what we had. So, just pause, find out the facts because there's a lot of things at play here besides just building a room for the city council and the community to meet. And thank you.
That concludes our public comments at this time. We'll have a new business, try and get a motion to discuss the resolution for the Arkansas Community Economic Development Program Grants.
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, well, if there's no discussion, can I get a, Mr. McClung?
Sorry. Yes, I would like to go ahead and make a motion since we do have background on this. Make a motion and I believe we're looking at the first one here is the ACEDP authorization. Is that the correct one?
It should be NB number one on the right-hand corner.
NB number one, yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we assign this resolution to number and read it for passage.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to assign this number and read it for passage. Discussion? All right, hearing none.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Ah, yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be 743. Resolution authorizing the city of Eureka Springs to submit an ACEDP, Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, grant application to the state of Arkansas, whereas the city of Eureka Springs is applying for grant funds through ACEDP and whereas the application process requires compliance with certain conditions and whereas to meet such conditions, the city of Eureka Springs has conducted a public hearing and has an active citizen participation plan, community development plan, and whereas under such plan, the city of Eureka Springs will receive and consider comments from the community in identifying and prioritizing community development and housing needs. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the mayor of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to apply to the state of Arkansas for funds under ACEDP provisions and to expend funds under the terms of any grant approved under the application.
All right, thank you. Our next order of business is on your chart. Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I move to open discussion on NB number two, which is fair housing and equal opportunity policy resolution.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to open up discussion for this new resolution affirming Eureka Springs Fair Housing. Any discussion? I get a motion to assign this a number?
I move to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Ms. Schneider, seconded?
Yes.
All right, so we got a motion and a second to assign resolution a number and read it for passage.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Six zero. Resolution number will be 744. Resolution affirming Eureka Springs Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Policy, whereas the Congress of the United States of America has declared that all citizens of the United States have the same right to inherit, purchase, lease, sell, hold, and convey real property and whereas the Congress of the United States of America has declared that fair and open housing is to be the law of the land and whereas the Congress of the United States of America has also declared that all citizens have an equal opportunity for employment. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs shall prohibit discrimination in public and private housing and property ownership and in employment opportunities. Be it further resolved that the city supports and shall promote open housing and equal opportunity employment.
All right, thank you. Bring us to item three. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I move to discuss NB number three, the anti-displacement plan resolution.
A motion by Mr. Thomas and second, Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. Get a motion to assign a number and read for approval.
I move to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six zero. A resolution establishing an anti-displacement plan for the city of Eureka Springs in compliance with ACEDP, Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program Grants, whereas the city of Eureka Springs understands its obligation in receiving funds under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, 24 CFR 570.496A B1, to replace all occupied and vacant occupiable low and moderate income, LMI, dwellings demolished or converted to a use other than LMI housing as a direct result of activities assisted with funds provided, and that all replacement housing will be provided within three years of the commencement of the demolition or rehabilitation relating to the conversion and whereas the city of Eureka Springs understands its obligation to provide relocation assistance as described in 570.496A B2 to each LMI household displaced by demolition or by the conversion of an L- conversion of an LMI dwelling to another use as a direct result of assisted activities. And, whereas the City of Eureka Springs understands that if any such project will involve the demolition or conversion of LMI dwelling units, the following will be provided. Section one, the general location on a map, an approximate number of dwelling units by size, that is number of bedrooms, that will be demolished or converted to a use other than LMI dwelling units in a, as a direct result of the assisted activity. And, section two, a schedule for commencement and completion of the demolition or conversion. And, section three, the general location on a map, an approximate number of dwelling units by size, number of bedrooms, that will be provided as replacement dwelling units. And, section four, the funding source and a schedule for the provision of replacement dwelling units. And, section five, the basis for concluding that each replacement dwelling will remain an LMI dwelling unit for at least ten years from initial occupancy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, the City of Eureka Springs will make every effort to minimize the displacement of persons from homes.
Thank you. All right, need a motion for new item number four. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I move to discuss NB number four related to excessive force by law enforcement.
Second.
He's second?
Nikki.
Nikki, all right. Had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Green?
I'll move to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. McClung to assign a number and read for passage.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six zero. Resolution number will be seven four six. A resolution to establish a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement under the City of Eureka Springs jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs is applying for AEDC, Arkansas Economic Development Commission, funding, and whereas a condition of funding is that the City of Eureka Springs adopts a policy to comply with the relevant section of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, forty-two USC 5341 as amended. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the City of Eureka Springs shall ensure and enforce the following. One, law enforcement agencies under the City of Eureka Springs jurisdiction shall not use excessive force against any individual engaged in a nonviolent civil rights demonstration. Two, law enforcement agencies under the city's jurisdiction shall not physically bar the entrance to or exit from a facility or location which is the subject of a nonviolent civil rights demonstration. Three, the city's response to such nonviolent civil rights demonstration shall endeavor to protect the rights of all nonviolent demonstration participants, persons located in the vicinity, and persons owning property in the vicinity. Four, if a nonviolent civil rights demonstration should occur, four shall only be permitted when necessary to protect the rights of individuals or to uphold the law, and the city shall only permit the least amount necessary to achieve its lawful goals.
Madam Clerk, I think in the first sentence, whereas the City of Eureka Springs is applying for, should be AEDC as opposed to AEDC, or sorry, Economic Development Commission.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that brings us to new item number five. Mr. Thomas?
I move to discuss NB number five related to the CDBG Grant Administrator.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, get a motion to assign a number and approve for passage.
I make a motion that we give resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
All right, Ms. Schneider made motion, Ms. Green second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be seven four seven. A resolution designating NWA EDD, the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, as the CDBG Grant Administrator for the City of Eureka Springs Water, Wastewater Grant Project. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is applying to AEDC, Arkansas Economic Development Commission, oh, good, for an ACEDP, Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program Water and/or Wastewater Grant, and whereas a state and federal regulations require that a certified grant administrator administer the grant, and whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, recognizes that the grant administrator will assist in compliance with applicable federal, state, and local laws related to the administration of the grant. And, whereas the City of Eureka Springs has met with representatives from NWA EDD and that, and feels confident that it will administer the above referenced project competently. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the City of Eureka Springs hereby authorizes the mayor of Eureka Springs to designate NWA EDD as the grant administrator for the above referenced ACEDP grant, subject to AEDC approval, and to enter into a contract with NWA EDD for such services if the grant application should be successful.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes our AEDC and all those other initials, grant resolutions. So, thank you all very much. Our next item of business is, a new business is another resolution to accept certain real property inside city limits. Get a motion to discuss?
Sound moved.
Get a second? All right. I was approached about a month ago by Oma Thorpe, who is a spouse of Sergi, I want to say Pilon, may not be pronouncing his name correctly. They had some property up, located right behind the transit facility building on Highway That is, they sold off some of their property, and this was a remnant that they didn't sell off, but it wasn't, it's in such a terrain that's not going, they can't use it, and they wanted to give it to the city. And it does border the Transit Department. And so that's literally what this is about, is wanting to give us two lots, I believe, that borders the Transit Department up on Highway sixty-two. Mr. McClung?
Is it, Mr. Meyer, is it laying back behind the maintenance barn?
Yes, sir.
Is that where it is?
Yes, sir.
So that ridge is?
It's kind of in a valley.
Well, I mean, oh, it's not that ridge area back?
No, it goes down, I think they sold part of the ridge, I can't think the name of the street. Ronnie Young lived back into there.
Back in, up Peerless?
Peerless, yes. And that's?
Really? Back in that way?
Yeah.
Is it that ravine back in?
Right.
Behind there?
Yep.
What's part of that?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, all we're doing?
We're doing them a favor is what we're doing is, is we're taking away their, where they don't have to pay taxes and?
Pretty much.
Basically what we're doing.
Yeah.
It's not?
So?
I don't think it tied into the trails or anything like that or not, I don't know, but?
It could be, but it's, you know, at this point, it's not, I mean, I don't think the trails looked at it, and this was something, they came up on their own solution. They're moving out of country and?
But somebody from your office has looked at it, at least went up to try to see what it was?
I looked at it and tried to, tried to pinpoint, I mean, we hadn't had it surveyed. You know, I didn't go out there with a surveyor, but?
I don't think?
But Oma.
Any need?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, any other questions?
Yes, sir. It's not going to cost the city anything?
No. Outside of, you know, not getting any more property tax on the?
Record, recording the deed.
Right.
Yeah.
True. So, all right, if there's no other comments? Ms. Green?
I move to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Get a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Green made a motion and Mr. McClung seconded to read, sign a number and read for passage.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Six zero. Resolution, resolution number will be seven four eight. Resolution to accept certain real property, whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, having been informed that Oma Rose Thorpe and Sergey Abel Philon desire to transfer certain real property to the City of Eureka Springs, and whereas the City of Eureka Springs is willing to receive said property, and whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs understands the transfer as contemplated in the attached quick claim deed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that this council approves the acceptance of said property and authorizes the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Mr. Meyer? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that if you didn't read it, it does exclude the mineral rights. They retain mineral rights, so when palladium is found by?
Well, it's subject to?
We're just?
I figured that was normal.
No, round here, mineral rights usually transferred.
Oh.
It's a long shot.
I think it's just subject to, they haven't, they don't know whether they've been reserved or not. All right, that brings us to our next order of business, or new business is, I believe, the ordinance amending, oh, no, it's regulations on food trucks, I'm sorry. Get a motion to discuss?
Sound moved.
Let me find my paperwork. Thank you. I think most of you have in your packet a letter from Bobby Ray, our building official. He had met with the owner of the property that we were talking about last week and that came in here and wanted to know, know what to do. These are the requirements that's going to be required from changing that structure up there from a food truck to a commercial business. The owner was notified, and as far as I am aware, I have not talked to the owner of the property, but according to our building official, he is willing to do this. So? Yes, ma'am?
In view of the situation of the last two years, we can always redo the food truck laws, ordinances, whatever you want to call them, and we discussed, give rid of the lottery since we've had the most like two or three people. We could just start all over again with what was originally requested. As in, two nights a week from nine PM to three AM, right downtown, there wouldn't be a lottery, there wouldn't be people being able to do or not do, it would, we would just limit how many trucks and that's it, and the area they can be in.
Ms. Schneider, I'm in complete agreement with you, and if you want to, when we look at setting the agenda, if you want to bring that up as an agenda item, we can. At this point, this is just regarding this, making this food truck a permanent installation. I agree with what you're saying.
Well, if we would go back to what we had originally discussed a couple of years ago, then this guy would be able to do it without having to go through all this.
Ms. Green?
Do we need an ordinance to do this, or can he just do it?
No, he just, I mean, he's going to do this, this is what, is what it takes to make it change.
Okay.
So, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll go on to our next item then. And that's the ordinance regarding the collection of expenditures for cleanup. Get a motion to discuss?
Sound moved. Second.
All right. Comments? Questions? Ms. Schneider?
Okay, so we heavily discussed the idea of a tax lien as opposed to just a lien, so they would end up having to pay. What would be, and you had said that we could actually discuss with the people to work out a payment plan, so to speak, if they couldn't come up with the full amount. I don't know if it's possible, is legal, to also put in there that they would have the option of just turning the property over to the city? So let's say they have an old historic building that's now ramshackle, it's got to be fixed because we can't afford to lose it, they don't have the money or the interest to fix it, the city would put a lien on it instead of doing that, could we give them the option of just signing it over to the city and then it would be ours to totally redo?
I want to refer this to our city attorney, but I'm assuming that anybody can give anything they want to the city.
Well, I'm saying, could we use it as an option to, before we would do any repairs, you know, if they knew a lien was going to be coming of fifty thousand dollars, they could just say, well, it's yours.
I would strongly encourage the city not to get in the business of strong-arming people into giving up their properties. As the mayor just said, if someone wants to give the city a piece of property for a reason, it can be done just like the council did a few minutes ago, but the city shouldn't go around making that offer, which could be considered by a court to be a veiled threat.
That's what I was asking. Okay. So it's not good to have it on the papers as an option?
I would not suggest doing so.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Meyer?
This is mainly for cleanup, right? Junk in the yard?
It's for that and for, we had one instance where we had somebody, one of the buildings in the historic district was needing a roof badly, and the, it was out of state landlords in a trust, and we couldn't get them to do anything, so it was also?
I see.
A historic significant structure. Finally, they are, they did put some tarps over it and got to take care of, but for things like that, also.
I see.
Mr. Buford?
We talked last time about sidewalks, does this cover sidewalks too, or just?
Yes, sir.
I looked at the sidewalk ordinance and it, I couldn't see that this 5.0404 incorporated the sidewalk ordinance with 9.0804. I didn't, it was?
I'll throw that back to the city attorney.
Well, I don't think your intent is to limit this just to the thought. This is, makes it for any mitigation or rehabilitation of any violation of city code.
If you look at 5.0404, it just talks about structures, and it doesn't, it doesn't talk with, it doesn't reference sidewalks at all.
Sidewalk ordinance is self-references that if you allow your sidewalk to deteriorate to a certain point, that it becomes a violation of city code. If you want to change the wording, I certainly will not be offended to do that, but I think it covers sidewalks.
Mr. Buford, would you have a recommendation on how to change it to?
Well, since we did reference 5.0404, and we didn't reference 9.0804, which is a sidewalk, if the city attorney is happy with the way it is, it covers sidewalks, that's fine, but I, it looks to me like we're going to pop that litigation on this anyway at some point in time, possibly since we're talking about repairing property and putting a lien on them. I would, I would recommend we tie it back into referencing the sidewalk.
Mr. Attorney, do you think if we said code section 5.04.04 and? Mr. Attorney, do you think if we said code section 5.04.04 and section 9.04, whatever the sidewalk, would that cover that?
We could easily add another section, I think, that would say that it also applies throughout the remainder of the code, as opposed to do, trying to reference each section here, because the way it is written, it covers not only, or the intent, as I understand it, is not to cover only sidewalks, not to only cover overgrown weeds or abandoned vehicles that have to be drug away, or things of that nature, which is what is mostly in 5.04. So, it may need either a section that says it's applicable to the entire code, or it may need 5.04 removed. The 5.04 reference that is there is simply to instruct the coding officials that will have the duty of placing this in our coding book, should it become law, of where we would normally put it. It's not necessarily, in my opinion, referring directly to that being the only portion of the code that it applies to, but I certainly do not object to it being made tighter and so that it refers to the entire code.
Ms. McClung?
Yeah, I like what the attorney, city attorney said about tying, tying it to the entire code, because if we get specific, then, then if we leave something out, they will say, someone may say, well, you're identifying them if, you know, and they may fall in the cracks someplace, and so I would rather it be tied in and cover the, the code as an aggregate.
I agree.
Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, I agree with the attorney and Mr. McClung.
Any other comments? Ms. Buford?
I agree. I think in all the all-encompassing, so nothing falls through the cracks.
Okay. So I think we're basically comfortable right now at this point, so what I'm hearing?
I want to read it again.
I think Mr. Buford's point is that at this point, he would like to not reference the 5.0-
The 9.0?
Uh, the 5.0404 directly as, other than that this is the place to put it in the code, but that in, adding a statement that it's applicable to the entire code.
Correct.
So it would, it would need a small modification to add that it is applicable not only to that section of the code, but the entire code.
Can Ms. McClung?
I think we could go ahead and, and do a first reading tonight, and then have the city attorney make that, make that addition, and have it ready for our next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Green?
I'll go ahead. I move to give the ordinance a number and read it with the modifications by the lawyer.
So just read it.
Okay.
Sign a number and read it for first reading. Ms. Green?
Okay. I move to give the ordinance a number and read it, is that right?
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Why read it?
No, well, I need a, I need a second, I need a second.
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay. Ms. Snyder? I'm sorry.
So, why are we jumping the gun, there's no rush on this, why can't we just wait until it's totally complete and then do it?
Because that's where we can have it completed, and then Mr., the city attorney will have it modified, and then we'll have it read the next time for the second reading.
Wait for January, and he can have it modified.
If you want to make a motion to defer it until-
I just think it's silly to be jumping the gun and rushing.
Ms. Snyder, if you'd like to make a motion to defer it?
Okay, I make a motion that we defer it until it's complete, so we can do all the proper readings in order appropriately at one time.
Is there a second?
Of course not. It's logical.
Hearing no second. Okay. Go back to the original motion. I think we, Mr. McClung seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion to assign a number and read for first reading. All those in favor, say five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Five, one.
The ordinance number will be 2374, and ordinance amending the municipal code 5.04.04, collection of expenditures for cleanup. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, recognizes that the city may incur expenses in mitigation or rehabilitation of private property that is subject to violations of the municipal code, and whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs believes these, those costs should be borne by the property owner. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated provides two methods to assist collection of these expenses. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, section 5.04.04, should be amended to read as follows. In the event the city expands city funds for mitigation and/or rehabilitation of a violation, the city may file a lien against the real property for the cost that's authorized by Arkansas Code Annotated, section 1814101. The amount of the lien may be determined at a public hearing before the City Council held after 30 days' written notice, by mail, return receipt, requested to the owner of the property, if the name and whereabouts of the owner is known, and to the lien holders of record. If the name of the owner or whereabouts of the owner cannot be determined, then the amount will be determined only after newspaper publication, as required by law, of notice of the public hearing once a week for four consecutive weeks. The determination of the City Council is subject to appeal to the circuit within the time specified by law. The amount so determined at the hearing plus 10% penalty for the collection, in accordance with Arkansas Code Annotated, section 1454904A2A, may be certified by the City Council by resolution to the tax collector of the county in which the property is located, to be placed on the tax books as delinquent taxes and collected accordingly. The amount less 3% thereof, when so collected, shall be paid to the city by the county tax collector. In the alternative, the city may file a lien for the amount determined, as set out above, which can then be collected by enforcement against the real property by filing, by a filing in the Carroll County Circuit Court, as authorized in Arkansas Code Annotated, section 1814102, within 18 months. Section two, provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby revealed to be appealed to the extent of such conflict.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our, our business and- Ms. Meyer? Finished business, yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the just previously read ordinance for passage on its first reading.
Thank you. Get a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, say five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. McClung, I was jumping the gun there.
Okay. That'll help.
All right. Now then, I think we're finished with all of our unfinished business. Agenda setting. Mr. Buford, do you have something?
Yes. On November 13th, the planning commission voted to request the City Council reduce the number of planning commissioners from seven down to five. I would like to request that this be placed on the City Council agenda for the next meeting.
Get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Green seconded on that. Any further agenda items? Ms. Snyder?
Oh, discussion of changing the food truck lottery?
I'll second that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Put the animal ordinance back on?
We're still on, we're just waiting for you to get some information-
Oh, okay.
To the city attorney on definitions.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought this wasn't on this time.
No.
All right. I will have them next time.
If you can get us some definitions to the city attorney, I think there wasn't much, but I think that's what he's waiting on.
Okay.
We get that, then we'll, we'll have that on there too. Any further items on the agenda? All right. Hearing none. Mr. McClung, you got any comments?
Merry Christmas. Do we, do we, ah, never mind. We don't.
We are-
I decided we don't. I didn't. Exactly privilege, or whatever I am. May.
Ms. Meyer?
I hope the next snowstorm is as bad as the last one.
Ms. Buford?
This is my last meeting. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to sit on the city couch for the unexplained term of Mr. Mitchell, and I've enjoyed it, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. When do we get sworn in?
Okay.
Ms. Green?
I want to thank Tom Buford too. I, he's a gentleman I greatly admire, I'm going to miss him, I'm glad he's still on planning, and I'm glad he came and sat with us. And Merry Christmas.
Mr. Thomas?
I thought it was too early to say Merry Christmas, but this is our last meeting, so Merry Christmas.
All right. I also want to thank Mr. Buford for your service, not only planning commission, but especially being on the city council. He's been an excellent person to have on here, and we, I sincerely appreciate it working with you, and I'm sure we'll continue on working with the planning commission too. So, as, we got a few things going on, we've got December the 15th, we have Christmas Eureka with Barrett Barber, the Northwest Arkansas Gospel Choir, and Rachel Field, 7:00 PM, free donations or canned food for Flint Street Bank here at the auditorium. And on the 22nd, we'll have Home for the Holidays, again at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and big contributions or canned goods, again, for Flint Street Food Bank. City offices will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and also on New Year's Day. We will have a council budget workshop on January the 8th at 4:00 PM in the auditorium, and on the 14th, we'll have the regular council meeting. We will be, the 14th will be our regular council meeting. The budget workshop will be the 8th.
Okay.
For those who knew, older people who are going to be sworn in, they will be swearing people in, and all the other elected official too, Madam Clerk and myself, at midnight, New Year's Eve, over at the courthouse. If you don't want to go over there, for the aldermen, we will be having, swearing in at the courthouse at 11 o'clock in the morning on New Year's Day.
At our courthouse.
At our courthouse. So you don't have to get up and stay up till midnight, if you don't want to.
Did you say at 11:00 AM?
11:00 AM. Yeah. Down in the mayor's office. And let me know if you want to, if you want to do that, or if you're going to go over New Year's Eve, of course I'll see you over there on New Year's Eve, if you're there. Otherwise, I'll see you New Year's Day at 11 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, what was the date, what was the-
New Year's Day.
No, the date and time for the-
Budget?
Yeah, for the workshop.
Okay. Budget workshop, 4:00 PM on the 8th of January, 2019, next year. And that's it. Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year, and get a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Get second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all.
What time's that workshop?
5:00 PM.